I think we should hear Paul.
Yeah, well, I think we're getting them to the.
Right, no, but I'm saying I think Maria is ready to go on. If we're ready to go, if the board is ready to go in general.
We have five minutes.
Yes, yes, yes. Five minutes if you're going.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know what that should be.
I don't know.
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 Thank you.
This is important.
Right, right.
Hi, sir.
Hey, good.
Um.
I'm sorry.
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 Okay.
So yeah, I can give you things for the house also like my gun, my gun that I gave. So.
Okay.
This is.
Right, good.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know.
I don't know.
That's a good one.
Let me do it.
I kind of want to.
Yeah.
Um, I think we got to make some small comments that continue more like a shorter.
Yeah.
So I think you didn't want to know.
I don't know.
The training was already closed.
Yeah.
Um, or the secret determination is already done.
So now I have a negative.
So now where we're at is additional.
So I just.
Okay.
It's really exciting here at this time of the week.
First of all, the.
Things that were seen, which has been resolved.
Really, really.
Where's our.
Okay.
I don't know.
Could you feel it?
Thank you.
Please.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wish.
I think.
Very good.
I think.
And they were shooting.
Yeah.
And I.
And you don't.
Didn't stop.
You know.
I thought.
Maybe.
First one.
Oh, no.
It's from my.
Yeah.
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 Which you like Jim.
Yeah.
Two minutes. Two minutes.
Yes.
Two minutes. Two minutes.
Different questions.
Adding to it.
Very nice. Oh, yeah, it's the best day of the year. I suppose, I think it's supposed to get a little ugly again tomorrow.
Yeah, it's supposed to red hurt.
Yeah. Can't seem to get three in a row.
He's a blessing.
One.
So.
So excited.
We're not.
We're not.
We're not.
Good.
You guys.
Much better.
Really just like.
I.
Yeah.
You don't.
Tired and cranky.
Yes.
So.
It's seven o'clock.
Hey, seven o'clock, good evening. My name is Lou Musella. I'll be chairing tonight's meeting in the absence of Rob. Mr. Is absent. So I'd like to call this meeting of April, the Planning Board, April ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the Village of Pauling Planning Board to order. And we'll start with a roll call, Vivian.
Uh, Rob Fister is absent. Marie LaGore, here. Lou Musella.
Here.
Pete Pennelli.
Here. Pete, can you sign the pledges?
Yes. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, what we're going to do tonight is we're just going to have a little bit of change in our agenda. No, fifteen Memorial was on the agenda first. But I think we're just swapping around for, uh, to expedite the process a little bit. So we'll have Pauling Commons come up and, uh. Can you fill us in on what changes might have taken place? Hi, Karen.
Hi. I don't think there are any changes from last time we were here. Except we have a few less trees.
Yeah.
And I will say, though, that Evan from Insight has worked with Labella, the engineering consultant, also some of the drainage issues that were brought up for Sunset Avenue. So I think that they've come to a resolve to take care of the drainage in a slightly different way to the benefit of the Sunset Avenue.
I would also.
Yeah, I can speak to that briefly. Um, yeah, Evan did meet with our staff and we discussed some alternatives to the drainage plan and design, and so those have been instituted, um, all to the better of the project.
Well, that's great, of course. From what they explained to us at the last meeting, they've been very patient, the people on Sunset, considering everything that they've been going through, you know, with the flooding in the basement and everything like that. So anything that you guys can do to relieve that headache.
Yeah, I think it's certainly gotten better with the temporary fix that we put in there, but with a permanent fix.
Yeah, they should, they should be very happy.
Yes.
Yeah, and I believe that Evan wrote a very detailed letter, kind of capturing what we discussed during our meeting and the changes that were made and summarizing kind of the current conditions with groundwater in and around the site. So that information's documented, it's on file.
Oh, good, very good. You have the floor.
I think that we've addressed most of the, or all of the comments from planning and engineering comments as well. I think we're just, we're waiting to hear back from the Health Department and DEP regarding some sewer and water connections on this, but I think other than that, we're pretty much got everything covered.
Yes, so the public meeting is closed.
Yes, correct.
Yep. The secret determination was concluded last week with NIGDEC.
Correct.
And so right now we're looking at some, a conditional approval of the site plan. Karen, is that correct?
That's correct. And so the conditions would be approval under section eighteen thirty-seven of the watershed regulations for the new sewer extension from the city's DEP. Approval from Department of Health from the county for sanitary water connections. Approval from the Pauling Joint Sewer Commission for the sanitary connection. Approval from the Village Board for the water connection. Enclosure of all open engineering and planning comments, and those that are open are specifically related to those approvals.
Those are the open items.
Yep.
Joe, I have a question for you. If we vote on the conditional site plan approval tonight, does that have to be unanimous vote?
Well, it would be tonight because you only have three members here.
So if Marie abstains or votes, how would that, how would that be considered?
Yeah, you couldn't carry it if you didn't have the unanimous decision of your members present tonight. I did speak with Marie and we did mention, because Rob had backed out last time, that Marie familiarized herself with the application, get comfortable. I think Marie, obviously speak for yourself on the record, but I think Marie is comfortable.
Oh, good.
Yes, I do.
Oh, then very good. And we can vote on a conditional, a conditional site plan approval.
There are just a few other, um, conditions that we wanted to add to the resolution, which I shared with Joe. That all outdoor lighting shall be on timers to dim between close and open of commercial businesses. Lighting at three thousand Kelvin or less and in accordance with the materials submitted to the planning board. vehicular circulation around building sixty-seven, one way is reflected on the site plan. Architectural finishes to be completed in accordance with the plan and relayed materials submitted to the planning board. All landscape planes shall be maintained healthy. Dead and diseased should be replaced in kind. In the event there's inadequate snow, uh, inadequate area for snow storage, that it's removed, um, in a timely fashion. And that so storage only occurs in those areas noted for snow storage. That refuse be removed by a certified carter to mitigate any overflow of waste material. This is, and this next one's related to the bog turtle concerns of DUC. Erosion sediment control and stormwater management shall be maintained per the approved plans at all times to avoid impacts to the bog turtle, which was their recommendation. Approval by the Village of Pauling as the MS four for the SWIP and approval by the State DUC for the general permit. You don't, these are not. So that would be in the know, therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the application for amended site plan. So we're approving it, but these are still things that apply.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to approve a conditional site plan. I'll make a motion to approve the additional, okay, can I have a second?
I do.
All the, uh, Vivian, when you take a roll, please.
Um, Rob Sisters, right here, Marie LaGore. Lou Musella.
Yes.
And Pete Pennelli.
Yes, that's unanimous. The conditional site plan has been approved.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Kurt, there should be a plan with that landscape maintenance, just some kind, it can really even just be narrative. Okay. But to meet that condition, obviously, that's a going forward condition. Sure. So, so propose something that.
We can add, I think we use the language on other projects, I think we probably just put it out here as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, or get in touch with them.
Yeah, just on the final site plan with everything we just had added to that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we'll do.
Do that, Kurt. Good night. Fifteen Memorial.
I finished up the attempt today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this time I'll give you the floor to go over anything that we haven't discussed in the past, or if you'd like to just refresh our memory of what's going on too, it's fine. So the floor is.
Sure, sure. Do you want me to give a brief?
Sure, definitely.
Explanation of the product in public?
Yeah.
So the site is fifteen Memorial Avenue, and it is currently in the B one zone. It is a former single-family residence, and we are proposing to turn it into a four-suite hotel. It'll be run similarly to the Station Inn. And we are proposing to paint and restore the exterior. We are proposing some new fencing on the property and new planting. We're also proposing through this easement and aisle drive to space out and line, delineate six parking spaces in the back here. The, there's an existing stockade fence that goes around the property. We will remove portion of it and open it up so that it has a lower, a lower fence and you'll be able to see out into the village. It's meant to really complement, um, the public that comes in for weekends, love hikers, people frequenting Darrell's house. I should note that this site plan now is based on the survey that we submitted from Terry Collins, and so we plotted out the existing conditions. We are showing the easement here, the access, the drive aisle and the spaces. We'll also be providing one handicap parking space here with signage. And then the accessible aisle here and an ADA ramp that goes into the building. There will be one accessible suite on the ground floor. We are proposing, is part of the development of the property, to have an amenity outdoor space that will be available to the patrons of the inn. And I can show you. The signage, the signage will be very similar to what's at Station Inn. We're not set for the name yet, but it will be in keeping with what we see at Station Inn. The Station Inn sign is a hundred and twenty-seven inches from the curb line, so we will maintain that setback. And we will have a, a element as part of that sign, also similar to Station Inn. The light, the lighting that will be part of the yard and that will light the portion of the upper part of the CVS lot that's rented. We will install. That will light the yard at night and also light that parking lot.
By yard, you mean that amenity space?
Yes, yes, yeah. So we're showing, uh, lighting.
Yeah.
Through here. So it'll kind of be dual function for the yard and that other space. We're also proposing to put some planting in to kind of fence off from the other properties on Smith Street, so row of arboretum here, fast growing, evergreen, and then another row here as you come in and shielding the parking from that space. On this side here, we would like to put some boxwoods in to also kind of shield from the other neighbor to the other side. This diagram here is showing the fence, so it's a very much the same as what's at Station Inn, a, um, a white, not picket fence, but a white traditional wooden fence. So we think that will, you know, complement the charm of the building. As I said, the ADA ramp is here, so it's to the rear entrance, and I'll show you. So from that entryway, uh, the disabled will be able to have an accessible room here that goes into this two-room ADA suite, and then the new bathroom will be constructed with a rolling shower. I think that kind of answers our response to what was.
You have the necessary parking on site. You don't need any offsite parking. You don't have to rely on the CVS up a lot parking to handle.
We need four, and we're providing six.
Okay, that's good. And the picket fence that you have right now, is that all going to come down?
There's a stockade.
Oh, I'm sorry, the stockade, yes.
Part of it, part of it, but we will maintain a good portion of it.
Yeah.
But the idea is you have this accessway here that you can see from the village parking lot. The idea is that both the people in the village and the users of the inn would be able to see.
I was up there tonight, and are you going to do anything but that stairway that you have going down? Those steps are gonna, are you gonna fix those?
The steps at the.
You're going from the, from, no, you're going from the village parking lot onto your property.
Here, yes.
Yeah, right over there's some steps there.
Put a lower gate in there, yes, to secure it. And also another, um, sign with a lamp there as well.
Oh, good. Of course, for you, choke point between the common driveway coming down. You said you might widen it out. Are you going to try to widen that out to twelve feet instead of nine feet?
So this piece right here, we've applied for that variance. We, I know Dave has and Susan have contacted the neighbor to see if there's any way that they could widen that. We're waiting for a response on it.
So you just said that you applied to the variance. You've been before the CBA already or you're going for the next meeting?
No, we just put our application.
Oh, okay, I see, okay, thank you.
Yes. So it is this point here that is less than twelve feet as you drive past the stone wall. There was an old weight of gate here that has been removed already. So the stone wall is approximately eighteen inches wide, and at that point it chokes the drive aisle down to nine point eight, nine feet.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Karen, you have anything you would like to go over?
Let me just take a look here. Okay, so you said for the rear yard, it's an amenity space for people staying there, but it won't be used for special events.
No, not at this time. If it was, it would be with permission from, you know, Pauling.
So what's the most, I'm sorry, Karen.
No, go ahead.
So I don't forget. Four rooms you're talking about, right? What would be the most people, I mean, you can't ever account necessarily for how many people will try to get into a room, but what's it meant to accommodate if it's fully roomed?
So it's, um, two for this, it's based on the square footage of the rooms. So this is two, four, six, eight, and then this is only one, this is the square footage, so nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Okay. You, was there an issue with the, you going, the bathrooms? How many bathrooms you have and going from room to room?
Yes, you applied for a variance for that as well.
Yep.
So that can be corrected by a variance?
Well, that's a joke question.
Well, I didn't ask myself the question yet, because the CBA.
Yeah.
But.
Because if you're renting one room and I'm renting another room and one of us, we gotta use the facilities or.
Yeah. Well, to be clear, they're going to be four suites, so they're not going to be rented. You're not gonna, I'm not going to be renting this room, and then you're going to be renting the room.
Can I access the bathroom without interfering with anyone?
If you were a family, and so if, you know, a family was here, these people needed to use the restroom, you know, but they're not going into a common space.
But they're walking, can you, can you come over here and explain this to me right over here, please? So I'm renting this room right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I, and I want to get to the bathroom.
You need to go through here and not.
I have to go through your room?
Yes, yeah.
But you can't rent this room without also renting a assistant.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, tell me that again.
So you can't rent this room with also, without also renting this room.
You're renting the suite.
You're renting the whole suite.
Oh, one party's renting.
Right, so even if it was two couples coming to stay, you rented it altogether knowing that one person, one couple.
Cross over and use the restroom facilities, yes.
So that's all, this party knows each other.
Yes.
Yes.
We're gonna know each other better with the room. That's what I wanted to make.
We hope so.
What if we rent a room? Okay.
Where do you want to go? Okay, good, get that shit right away.
Did you get a chance to take a look at the easement information? I guess I didn't see it, so, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that they're going to be okay there.
Yes, I don't have any, any additional questions. I think, you know, we, I didn't get a chance to look at this before the meeting, so I think we're going to need that time to look at it, to live in here.
Okay, that being said, I would like to have a motion to open the public hearing. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. I want that, Marie, second.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, roll call, okay. Marie LaGore. Lou Musella.
Yes.
Pete Pennelli.
The public meeting is open. I'd like to turn it over to anybody in the, in the audience who'd like to say something. Yes? And could you please state your name, please? Come up forward and state your name, so Vivian can have it for the minutes.
Hi. How are you? Anthony Chera. D H I D R A. Will you indulge me to read?
Should we go right ahead, sir? It's yours.
So as I said, my name is Anthony Chera. Our family have owned, been owners in the village for thirty years, and in that time we've provided families with safe, clean and a quiet place to live. I'm also a board member of DAC Pauling Enterprises LLC, which is the legal owner of our neighbor, Nineteen Memorial Avenue. Once we received the public hearing notice, which was seven business days, we immediately attempted to retain an attorney. We found out rather quickly how prominent Mr. Daniels and his law firm, Daniels, Porco and Lusardo, are in the Village of Pauling. So, so far, around seven law firms and nine attorneys have turned us away with either a polite no thank you or we have a conflict. In the meantime, the new owners of fifteen Memorial Avenue have forged ahead with construction as it is a foregone conclusion that their plan will be approved. I am here to bring to the forefront some concerns and issues, ask a question and make a request. So let's talk about access, which is the main issue here. I'm going to make three copies so you have this.
Okay, let her see it and I'll show you.
Can you give it there? Yes. So as I assume the attorneys pointed out, fifteen Memorial Avenue was accessed by a pass-through agreement or easement that originated in eighteen eighty-two. This easement is our drive. To our knowledge, this agreement has been for a passage to a single-family residence. If this application is approved, we contend this would constitute a gross deviation from the original intent. It's beyond the scope of the agreement and is an overuse in pass-through. This issue alone, in our opinion, should negate the applicant's ability to move forward with this application. We urge the board to also consider the following issues. Safety issues, traffic. Nineteen Memorial Avenue is a six-family house. There are six parking spaces in the driveway, six families who traverse the driveway as their primary means for access to their cars and apartments, six families, including children, that use this area for barbecue use and quiet enjoyment. A proposed hotel would drastically increase driveway traffic all times of the day and night, on weekends, as well as hotel employees and delivery vehicles, creating a less safe environment. Liability issues. Having a commercial business pass through our driveway daily will invariably lead to liability issues. Maintenance issues, as it stands now, we pay for everything. It's our driveway, we pay for repaving and keeping it clean and snow removals and everything else. There's about a host of other issues that I can go through here that should be of concern to this board and to the village. So our property is the most effective property in the village, and these issues will have a negative impact on our tenants, their right to expect safety and quiet enjoyment. It may also negatively affect our ability to rent to prospective tenants in the future. We think the application should be denied. However, we respectfully request the board consider all of these issues before rendering a final decision. And here's my question. Does this board, the planning board, decide the issue regarding the pass-through agreement? What authority decides that issue?
Was I against, sir? Could you repeat that?
Does the planning board decide the issue regarding the pass-through agreement? Who decide, what authority decides that issue? This is a contentious issue.
Yeah, so generally speaking, the planning boards don't opine on what is essentially, and it sounds like you have a private, um, real estate interest. We can confirm, and we have, that the pass-through exists, and the question of whether or not it exceeds its original intention is really a, a private matter for the private parties to work out. Having said that, the board certainly can take into account the reality of what kind of passage that easement provides. In other words, even if it can be used for the purposes that the applicant wants to use it for, which is really a private issue, because as you said, it goes back to a very old easement. What was the original intent? Does this beyond, is this beyond the scope of that? But even if they decided that, yes, it's still in force, from a planning perspective, this board would still review whether or not it was deemed sufficient access to access the use that is being proposed here. So it's a little bit of both, I guess. I know that probably sounds like a lawyer answer, but the actual decision about whether or not a private easement is being violated by a certain action is really a private legal matter.
So wouldn't that have to be resolved first before you make any decision?
Well, you know, they proceed at their risk if it's not.
I understand that, but they're in, they're in this point of the process, so here's my request. And again, I'm not a litigator, so. Excuse me, so here's my request. We had about seven days, working days, to try and get an attorney. And like I said, nobody wanted to.
And like I said, nobody wanted to step forward. So, we're asking you to keep this hearing open for at least thirty days so we can retain an attorney, because this legal matter has to be resolved. As you can see, there's no way that they can open up a business through here, in our opinion, and do it safely, without inconveniencing us, our tenants, and our property.
Okay, you mentioned that there were some other things on your list that you could have read. Do you wanna add those things into the record at all, or you just want...
No, absolutely, I just didn't wanna take up too much of your time.
We're in a rush.
So as you know, Smith Street's a one-way. So people park right across the driveway, the access and the exit and entrance to that driveway, that easement has through, again, I don't know the legal term.
Well, I know that there is a no parking beyond this sign for that particular reason.
Yes, sir, and where the no parking sign is, still takes up about half of that. And then when people invariably park in front of it illegally...
I'm well aware, I'm well aware.
It's very difficult, just normal traffic to get in and out, forget about vehicles and delivery vehicles. I mean, our own oil truck has to drive down Smith Street, backed up, practically goes over the sidewalk, damaging the property once again, and this is what's gonna happen. Some other issues. Folks who come to visit their establishment aren't familiar, in our opinion, they're gonna go up the wrong way on Smith Street. I see it a hundred times a day, and again, that's something I guess can be addressed or whatever, but that's another issue. Once cars get into the passway and try and enter into their driveway, if it's booked up or whatever, what are they gonna do? They're probably gonna back out, some of them are gonna back out. Some of them are gonna park in our tenant spots just to run in and see what's going on, or make a delivery, or what have you. So that is definitely another concern of ours. And I talked about commercial deliveries, you know, that adds additional safety hazards, increased wear and tear on the infrastructure, which we're gonna have to pay for. Hotel guests now are gonna use our driveway to come and go, if they're walking to the village or whatever. They may go down their front steps or whatever, but what's to stop them from going to their car? And now, once again, an overuse of the pass-through. All these folks, you know, we have tenants going in and out of their vehicles, this is how they access our building. This is how they bring their groceries in, this is where they have their barbecues and stuff like that, you know, and use it for quiet enjoyment. So there's the safety of the tenants and their property, their cars. Noise from whatever gathering place they're having in the backyard, potentially, people hanging out, drinking, you know. Again, and that would be something the police would have to handle or whatever, but that's a concern of ours and the quiet enjoyment for our tenants. And lastly, I'll say, you know, just the idea of, you know, stability of long-term tenants. Most of our tenants, they're all under at least one year lease, most of them are two-year lease, stay for five years or ten years, versus the transancy of hotel guests, just coming and going all the time. I mean, what tenant's gonna feel safe with people constantly traversing through where they live? That's it, thank you.
I appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else? Okay, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open, to give the gentleman the time he needs to seek counsel, I think it's a fair thing to do. Motion to...
I'll make a motion that we keep the public hearing open for another thirty days, so this gentleman can seek what he has to do.
I agree, thirty days.
Okay.
Yes.
I think we don't wanna limit it to thirty days, but if we are adjourned in...
Yeah, we'll keep it open.
We'll keep it open, we'll keep it open.
Even better.
We'll go from that, we'll leave it open, because true, he might have to take two meetings together.
Well, if our next meeting got canceled, it's...
Right, if our meeting gets canceled, it's not fair to do that to him.
I'd like to just point something out.
Wait one second. Do we have that, is it open-ended on that, unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Sir?
I just wanted to point out that the continuation of the public hearing, well, totally understood that we're gonna adjourn and go to the next meeting.
Yep.
I don't think is the critical issue as far as dealing with the private potential dispute over the easement. You know, I've seen it plenty of times before where the resolution of, you know, dispute over easement is a condition of an approval. So I just, I don't wanna fall into a pattern where we're adjourning the public hearing, you know, and I'm sure, you know, the gentleman will be back next month and we'll have some resolution to this, but I don't wanna go into a pattern where we're adjourning every month and just leaving it open indefinitely until there's some resolution. I think it could be a condition of approval.
No, it's not, it's not, leaving the public hearing open is not premised on resolving the easement issue. It's more, I think, about that a number of issues were raised by a neighbor, they'd like some more time. But I, yeah, that's understood. If we got to that point and the planning board thought that the access was sufficient, it would be, I mean, as you know, if there's a legal dispute, it could take quite a long time to resolve. So anyways, let's not predict any of those things. But no, it's not premised on the easement matter being resolved between the two private parties.
Understood. Should we respond now, or would you be looking for a formal response to the comments, or...
Go right ahead, we'd like to respond, you can respond.
So just speaking more in general terms, and Mary, you can certainly jump in anywhere. We're gonna be very limited in terms of the traffic that's gonna be coming through. You know, I think we've talked about the need for parking, I think we're showing six parking spaces, we're really requiring, required four. We have four suites that are gonna have nothing close to full occupancy all the time. So we're gonna be talking about maybe somebody coming in for a weekend, and generally, they're there to enjoy the village and the walkability and enjoy the businesses. So they're not coming in and then leaving and coming in and leaving. You know, I would think that the traffic related to this operation is gonna be less than the multifamily building that, you know, we're passing through the easement. Obviously, the applicant contends that the easement is valid and is, you know, valid for this use, and obviously, we'll get into that more. But I just wanna point out that I believe the traffic will be, you know, not to the level that, you know, much of the gentleman expressed the concern of. You know, in terms of, you know, people going the wrong way on a one-way street, you know, that could happen with anybody visiting the village, and, you know, so I don't know that that's something that necessarily applies to this application. And again, we've discussed parties and, you know, and we've responded to that question. So noise will certainly be, you know, something that we're gonna be sensitive to. Everything will be done within, you know, the village noise ordinance and anything beyond just the tenants enjoying the outdoor amenity space would be cleared with the village before moving forward. So we just wanted to reiterate some of those items that were relevant to the...
Yeah, thanks. We understand both parties and we're gonna take everything into consideration. I mean, you seem to think that people aren't gonna go back and forth here and there, but we have no way in only that. So they understand your argument?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we'll certainly, we'll certainly look at everything, or watch for it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
You have anything else, Emma? Okay?
So, I'll just, I'll express what we started, so there's, just to remind the board, there are no employees, so there's no one coming on a daily basis to work.
Other than housekeeping. We have a housekeeping, but they walk, 'cause they live in the village.
Yep, and most, as we've also mentioned before, most of the tenants are gonna be coming off of the train or will be passing through on trail, and so we think we're well overparked, so we don't want the six parking spaces to be indicative of a higher level of traffic than, you know, than we're actually anticipating.
And also, wasn't it, you know, wasn't, were there apartments there? There were two apartments, upstairs and downstairs.
There was only two people living there.
Okay, but there could have been a lot more.
For seven years, and there could be a lot more guests in place, I mean, come on, folks, really?
You're telling us, are we, that most people could come by train, you don't know that?
Okay, guys, you know what we're gonna do, we're gonna address the board, and if you guys have any else to say outside, you can do that, but as far as the meeting tonight, you're gonna speak right up for my apologies, and that's not a problem.
Well, yeah, I do think the station inn, a lot of the guests do come on the train. You know, a lot of the hikers are not driving their car, they're taking the train out.
It might be useful to get some detail on that information.
Sure, how many people are, even the people who are frequenting Darrell's house, they're coming on the train, they're Ubering over to Darrell's and that, so...
Where do people who stay at the station inn park currently?
Well, there's the, there's the space above CBS, that's parking for station inn. And that's for, you know, that has fourteen spaces.
And they're all throughout the park right in front of the station, as well.
Me, it might be, just throwing some ideas out there, it might be useful to do a study of the parking that's currently occurring for station inn, to get an idea of how many cars are actually parking on a regular basis, to better determine, you know, whether people are arriving by train or if they're actually driving, 'cause that might help explain that.
Now, who would have done that study, how would we get that information?
And it might take quite a while to get meaningful data, so I think...
Well, I don't know, I mean, this is a busy tourist season, right? People are coming up now, it's great.
Might be the right time to get it, actually.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you do it, you know, two Saturdays, two Sundays, you know, you monitor the hours of peak, check-in, peak, check-out, and during that time, you count the number of spaces occupied. I mean, I think what you'd wanna do is provide to us your methodology, provide to us the number of spaces that are leased at the super lot, and then we go from there. But I mean, that would help us understand, you know, the claim that you guys are making, that most people are not driving.
Now, you, this is also electronic check-in and check-out. Could you provide us with that information?
Yeah, like, what does that mean?
The hard copies, you know, I'm sure you have it recorded someplace.
Does the station do that? What the occupancy is, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want you outside, you know, counting cars, and just know how many cars are coming in, but you do have a check-in, check-out electronic database that you can provide us with.
For building occupancy, it doesn't necessarily say whether they drove in a car or they walked, or came in any other way.
So with the electronic check-in, I'm just trying to understand how that works in terms of, like, peaks of people converging in one place. So, like, in an old-fashioned hotel, right, you have to check in by, what, 3:00 P.M., right? So that's your peak time. So with electronic check-in, you know...
There's posted check-in hours, it starts at 3:00 P.M.
It's like, runs like an Airbnb, so you can check in anytime after three, and then...
And then show up at three or after.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you, I know you answered this already, but could you just run through the delivery schedule for the facility, you know, in terms of linens and that sort of stuff?
I believe it would be...
Yeah, we, so, everything is in on property, you know, we have all the towels and we don't deliver, and we get, you know, everything is, we really don't have any delivery people that come, because we use Amazon and they just bring the, you know, whatever we need for that and they put the package on the front porch, you know, so we don't have delivery people.
No bulk deliveries?
There's no linen service.
No, we don't do linen service, we have big washer-dryers in the basement that we use for the station inn currently, and we're gonna do the same thing for Fifteen.
And there's food service, so there's no delivery.
Yeah, and we don't, you know, we don't serve breakfast, so there's no, you know, there's not that worry. And, you know, it's gonna bring, I mean, so much commerce to the town, 'cause people love Pauling and they come and they shop and, I mean, there's so many pluses that way. But, I mean, that's what people seem to, you know, and we do have, we do, I mean, we do have guests that stay from the school. Trudy Pauling is the only place to stay in the town besides the Pauling breakfast, that has one or two rooms. But, so...
So you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna get, you're staying this meeting open, right?
Yes.
You should say, all right, 'cause I don't wanna keep on getting into back and forth, 'cause I'm not an attorney, they're attorneys.
No, if you come up with another idea, you don't have to debate anybody within the room. We're well aware of the situation, and we're well aware of your concerns, and rest assured that this project is open, nobody's mind is made up, and we're gonna digest all any information and we're gonna come up with the thing that we think is right.
You can also...
Based on, we have legal counsel, we have our planner here, so rest assured that we'll take care of it.
During the time that the public hearing is open, you can also feel free to submit written comments to ensure that you're not just off the cuff at these meetings, you know.
Oh, I can submit my written comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You should give them to Vivian.
I didn't put any curse words on there. She'll email you in the morning if you...
Kidding. Nobody else in the public hearing, correct?
Can I just say, I don't think, I think when you went around and asked about keeping the meeting open, that what you did was a motion and a second, I don't think you actually voted on that.
Yeah, you took a role, did you, Vivian, on that?
On that one, we didn't take a role, it was...
I think you were on the motion, I would just do it.
Let's do it, yeah, let's go for, okay, just take a vote?
Just to leave it open, as Karen said, now.
All right. Rob Pfister's absent, Marie Legori.
Yes.
Lou Mysella.
Yes.
And Pete Pennelli.
Okay, that's, so leave the public meeting open.
To keep the public hearing open.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Karen, do you have anything else at this point?
No.
No? Okay. I don't have anything else at this point, so at this point, we'll adjourn and everybody will sit on the next meeting.
Next meeting, yes, is, I think it's May fourteenth, is the next planning board meeting. May fourteenth.
Okay, I'd like to have, make a motion to adjourn.
Are we gonna do minutes at all?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, good, sorry. Yeah, thank you, and Vivian, I wanna have...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night, take care. Has anybody had an opportunity to view the minutes from our previous meeting?
Sorry, it's so long.
I tell you what, it was sixteen pages, you did a very good job. So, that being said, I'd like to have a motion...
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Pete, you ready? Second, one favor.
Yes.
Aye? Okay. You'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting, make a motion to adjourn, you ready?
Oh, wait, 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 there was special meeting minutes, too.
Yes.
Did you see that one?
No, we'll do that one, too, make a motion to accept the minutes.
The special meeting?
We'll do this in one motion, one motion, you have minutes from the previous meeting and a special meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion now, we accept.
Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian.
Got it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
And adjourned, what now is motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Pete, motion?
Well, I'm a little rusty, so yeah, give me a few minutes.
Yeah, I hope you have, boss, don't worry.
Sorry?
Doing great.
I hope you have, boss, don't worry, I'm out of practice, but I'll get back in practice.
Okay.